John Coleman.
Here.
Kim Crepper.
Here.
David Henson. Jason Payne.
Here.
Bob Perry.
Here.
Jenna Smith.
All right, I call the Williams Town Special City Council meeting December seventeenth, twenty twenty four to order. There are requests that all guests please sign in if you have not done so already. At this time, would you care to stand as Pastor Payne leads us to a word of prayer?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for a beautiful day today, the sunshine and warm winter weather we have in here, Lord. Thank you for coming to earth and being the perfect gift, Lord, for redeeming us, for being our Savior. And we just thank you so much for doing that. And then we get to celebrate your birth coming up here in a couple days. And we just thank you so much for this time tonight. Pray you bless our conversation, bless the meetings that we're having, and just give us wisdom, Lord, give us ability to move forward, and bless our New Year, Lord, as we bring in the new year in twenty twenty five. Pray that you would continue to just help us to serve and do the right things for our community. Thank you again for this evening. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
As we state, as we say the pledge.
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the looking and justice of all.
You may be seated. All right, there are a couple announcements. The Christmas is coming up. We also have the New Year's coming up too. So the city building will be closed on December twenty fourth and twenty fifth for observance of Christmas. And the city building will be closed again December thirty first and January first in observance for New Year's. Also, keep be on the lookout for Wally, the elf on the shelf. He's still popping all around the city. We never know where he's going to be. This Friday, the city has a unique toy drive that it is doing. We asked residents to donate toys, various items for families who need some assistance this Christmas. And this Friday, we are going to be giving those Christmas gifts out to those families. We are very excited about that. And that is all the announcements I have. Any additional announcements from the council that you're aware of or failed to mention? Moving on to item seven. I'd like to take a moment to recognize a gentleman who has served the city in a thousand different ways throughout his time. He has done so many great things. He has organized all kinds of fun little activities for their Christmas party of the past. He has sat on council for many, many years, and he decided not to run again. And we would like to thank Mr. Bob Perry for his time serving in the city council. Bob, at this time, would you care to come down?
No.
We got you a plaque. Yes, sir. I'm gonna read it if that's okay real quick.
Thank you, sir. About twenty-three years. And what I'm proud of is I've served with Kim Crepper for his thirty-three years. So we've got fifty-five, fifty-six years with the twenties. So we're just now canceled. And I'm totally never been in heaven. So thank you, Mayor.
Can I read that to you?
Sure.
In recognition of your dedication and service to the city of Williams Town and its residents while serving on city council from August nineteen ninety-seven to December twenty twenty-four presented by the city of Williams Town.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Kim.
All right, moving on. City council consideration and approval of managed IPTV solution bid for the cable department presented by Superintendent Roy Osborne.
I wasn't sure if everybody had a copy of the memo, and I've got a kind of an updated sheet here behind it with the bid that came in.
Okay, so we kind of discussed this last meeting. We did receive one bid, which is what I kind of expected. She's got one.
Everybody got one?
Everybody should.
I had two.
I had two as well. I didn't realize that.
So the bids, we expected one bid to come in because we researched it. We were kind of looking at what was closely available to us. This solution, what this will do is basically change the video offering for the city completely. It's going to allow it to where we will have our channel lineup. So the channel numbers that Williams Town residents are used to, that's what they'll still have. They'll still have Channel sixteen. They'll still have their local content, ABC, CBS, from Lexington and Cincinnati, everything that we currently would have. This is just changing the way it's delivered, but it's doing it through IPTV. It's a managed solution, and on this video format, you can watch it on any device. So you could watch it on your cellphone, an iPad, or your seventy-inch TV at home. It eliminates the needs for set-top boxes. People can use their own smart TV. With this service, they have an app developed. It is branded with the city of Williams Town's information. They download that to whatever their streaming device is. They have a login that we give them with their paid service. And then they watch it. I wasn't going to do a PowerPoint. If you all wanted to see what the screens look like, we could. But it's anybody that's ever used a streaming service where you have, you know, a guide that shows what's on at different times, you know, on the different channels in your picture-in-picture box, it's going to look like that. It does have AI intelligence in it. So you can use your streaming device as remote, click on, you can either type in or you can just push a button and say, you know, what other shows did has Jennifer Aniston in it? And it can give you a list of shows with Jennifer Aniston in it. You can select one of those. It makes recommendations. It has sports playback features as soon as a sporting event is over. So you can pull up a Bengals game, and you can say, just show me this game in five minutes, ten minutes, thirty minutes, or sixty minutes, and it will intelligently give you the highlights of the game, the biggest plays, and it does it in the time span. If you say, just show me touchdowns during this game, it will just show you the highlights of the touchdowns in that game. Or if I just want to see Joe Burrow's plays, sacks, it'll just show you where Joe Burrow got sacked. So those are all features that will be available. This package also will give us a bunch of channels that we can give to internet customers for free. So if they don't subscribe to our video service, anybody that's kind of bought a new TV recently, you do a channel search, a Samsung or Vizio, you see all those free channels at the end of it that comes with the TV. It's kind of like that as well. So that comes with the service. It's a nice add-on feature. You know, that's why maybe you should go with our internet service rather than someone else's is, hey, you'll still get some free video content with it. So bids came in where we were at. I also, I can go down this breakdown. I could just entertain questions. If you have those, that might be simpler. We'll start with that. Bob?
Is this doing away with cable or just the boxes?
This is going to, it's definitely going to do away with the set-top boxes. It is going to be how we will present cable from now on. Rather than through an RF signal going to your TV, it'll go through an IP address to your TV.
What is this going to mean for older people?
So for that, it's not a problem. So you're used to using a set-top box. We can either show you, and there will be little videos you can watch on how to do this. But if you want just a regular box, we can still offer a box, but it'll be a different box. It'll be much smaller. It's made for IPTV. It'll have the little voice remote where you can talk in and say, I want to watch Channel twelve, and it will go to Channel twelve. We can still do that feature. The idea is to reduce that the city doesn't have to have as many set-top boxes purchased, and that the customers don't have to rent set-top boxes if they don't want to, to get DVR services or higher-end channels. They can do that with their own equipment.
One more quick question. YouTube, still have YouTube?
I don't understand.
The channel YouTube. I can bring YouTube up on my TV and listen to any music I want.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you can still do that.
All right, with the voice command, can you say, YouTube, play me a song individually? Would that work that way, do you know?
That doesn't change already if you can do that?
No, I can't. I have to type it in, and my fingers don't type very well.
I can't say for certain that it would for YouTube. I do know I was watching, they just launched a update to the software today, and I watched a Zoom, through a Zoom meeting, I saw a presentation, and it did have where if you ask the AI for a specific show, it is, I know, tied to where it can direct you to Netflix. Like, if you have Netflix on your, that streaming device, it'll say, would you like to watch it on Netflix? You can say yes. And then when you watch it on Netflix, as soon as you shut that off, it takes you back to Williams Town Cable. Yes, sir?
I have four questions.
Okay.
Does this run off? I know it's a streaming. Does it run off the current Wi-Fi? Like, how many megabits per second do you have to have to run?
It would depend on how much, how many streams that you're there doing in their house. But fifteen megs would handle all the HD streams that you probably needed. That's where everything's oversold these days, where they're selling five hundred meg connections to homes and stuff like that. You know, you don't need it.
Okay.
I know our competitors spend a lot of money on marketing that. But, you know, we're getting ready in the beginning of this year to cut all of our modem customers over to a new system that we purchased. It's been tested and launched, all that. And when we do that, we're bumping our speeds up too. Our minimum will be three hundred meg.
Nice. Couple more questions. Will you still be able to advertise, like, Channel sixteen? Do you still have, like, all the local businesses?
Yes. Yeah, Channel sixteen will still be on this service, and this service does allow for ad insertion if the city wants to go into that later down the road. You can do ad insertions to where local TV or local businesses could advertise. And without getting too technical, every cable provider does rate a few ad inserts on different channels for different events. And so if people wanted to advertise during the Super Bowl, you know, if El Jalisco wanted to have a commercial during Super Bowl, we could get to the point if we want to set that up to sell it. This system can't handle that.
Last question. Do you expect an increased fee for this service, or is it gonna?
No, I do not expect an increased fee for this. I've got basically any kind of monthly services. I've got a plan for how we can maintain that. The caveat to that, video always goes up. So this service won't cause an increase. But every year, we get hit with royalty increases. It doesn't matter what they are. You know, I've been here doing this long enough. I remember when your local channels cost you nothing to be, you know, for them to be on cable TV. Now, those local channels cost thirty dollars a sub. So almost all the contracts have a certain anywhere from three to five percent increase built into them usually. Some of the contracts hit at different times. But yeah, video is its own worst enemy when it comes to that. And something I do like about this system as well, that we do not currently have, is it does give us analytics. We can now see, not by individual person, like, I can't see what Jenna is watching for TV, but I can see that the most viewed content, what channels are being watched, what time of day they're being watched. So if we see that there are some channels out there that are just not being utilized, and we're paying royalties on that, now we can intelligently start reducing that and kind of weeding out that stuff. Sometimes we're held to it with contracts anyways, where, you know, ESPN, it's owned by Disney. So you have to take Disney Junior if you want ESPN, you know, and stuff like that. We've got the, they got that built into some of it. But I will tell you, there's two channels that I'm probably going to drop that would save about nine dollars per sub per month, just with those two channels, because they have lost the only thing that viewers really wanted to, you had to kind of keep them for it. And they lost the coverage of the teams that draw that. So we dropped those two channels. That's over nine dollars a sub in royalties saved per month. Jenna?
When is the plan to roll this out?
Well, okay, so what I would ask is for someone to entertain a motion to approve the IPTV solution from Minerva contingent upon favorable pricing for a connection to, a fiber connection to Columbus. And so reason for this is, this pricing's good, this project works. I have been researching this most of the year. I had one in California that I was going to do, thought I had favorable pricing to get connected to that, and that pricing killed the project. That's why I'm now looking at this company who has really good, equally as good product, and I found out I can connect to them in Columbus, Ohio significantly cheaper. Now, if that pricing does not come back good, we kind of got to scrap the whole thing. Because if we can't get to the service, that's a problem. But this pricing, they've made a lot of concessions for us because we're small, and quote, and the pricing's good through this year. By making the motion that we approve this contention upon getting favorable pricing, is the way I would word it, to Columbus, if that, they was hoping to get the pricing before the meeting today, but if, say, it comes in Thursday, we don't have to have another meeting for me to be able to execute this agreement. Yes, Kim?
This system that you have, is it going to replace anything that you have in your current system that's either outdated or it's just worn out?
This is going to, yes, it's going to replace, by going with this, if we fully move to this, we eliminate all the satellite receivers that we need in the head end. We won't need a, the BMP MUX that I've talked about in the past, that at one time, they were ninety thousand dollars. Now, they're more like four hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. We won't need one of those. So we don't have that hanging over our head of what if this one goes bad. We could eliminate the need by moving toward this of even needing satellite dishes there. We have some that are undersized that I've been gradually upgrading. You drive by there, you see that back row in the back, and you can tell that those are all nicer, newer, slightly larger dishes. And that's what we've been moving toward. But I've still got several there, at least, I think, sixty thousand dollars worth of dishes that we want me to upgrade.
What is the lifespan of something of this thing to work in your system?
So the way I have this set up, and the way it's hosted, and the way we're paying for it, there was an option that was quoted that we would host some servers at our head end, and we would be responsible for them. And your upfront fees were going to be a lot more. Your monthly fees would be a little less. But I had the break-even point figured out to eight years out. That's at what point you would break even between the two, which would be about the time you'd have to replace those servers. And so you'd be spending another forty-eight thousand dollars for new servers. By doing this method, they are responsible for all servers, caches, everything that we need. All it is, is I got to get that connection to Columbus. That connection comes in, I plug it into an existing port on our router, and we're up and running.
So this system, so what you're saying, if the system is going to keep your quality of which everybody expects, and it replaces some of your outdated stuff once you plug in, providing you get that Columbus line secured?
We get the Columbus line. If I get, sign this and get the Columbus line, they said they think by the end of March, we could have it launched. I think, I'm not comfortable with that. I like, let's say, May. they said they think by the end of March, we could have it launched. I think, I'm not comfortable with that. I like, let's say May.
Yeah. Do you have, uh, cause I don't know off the top of my head, uh, in, in the cable department, do you have any funds in your depreciation fund like the electric has depreciation fund? Do you have anything?
We do, we do have some.
Okay, you don't know that number off the top of your head, do you?
I don't know. It's one forty.
One forty, alright. So in other words, if you have depreciation funds to cover this, that means we really don't have to do any financing out, out of the city.
No, if we're at one forty, the whole thing, if you look, was a hundred and thirteen.
Okay, yeah, I've seen that number, but then you have annual fees and monthly fees now.
Yeah.
I guess for, for people that, you know, we understand annually that what's really each, your profits is the royalty fees.
Right, the royalties eh, is what, you know.
You can't control that, I know.
Right, the only way you can control it is, is you make a decision to drop a particular network to keep the amount down. And then you have people that say, well, if you don't keep that, I'm going to go with another provider or whatnot. Um, I will say this, I've talked about this at a, at a couple of meetings that I've been at that for other stuff at school board. Was telling them about the product. After I described the product, I had people who, they had their internet with us, but they had dropped video. That they said after I described it to them, they said, well, shoot, I'd come back to, to cable, is the way they word it. I'd come back to cable if you guys launch that. So we probably could expect some growth.
Alright, with you saying that question, that was really another question I had, so I'm glad you brought that up. So with the enhancements of this that you've talked about, I know at one time your department went and filmed basketball games and different events throughout the community and I guess that doesn't happen no more. Is that correct?
Yeah, that happened. That stopped a long time ago. They, what they did is they sold advertisements to local businesses. We went, um, you, you don't make any money on that. It was more of just a feature to put onto the cable.
Okay.
Um, but if your question was going to, would that be put on this system? Yes.
Okay.
Basically, we will still upload our local content, uh, even for like uh, AB, like five, nine, and twelve out of Cincinnati. I'm still gonna have a device that collects that channel and I'm going to send it up through Columbus and down to the, the other head end. Where this is all combined together in this package. And basically, any other company that does that, it builds their redundancy by, they, they do that as well. And we, we will send channel sixteen up to them and it will be encoded and be put where you can watch it on your phone, everything, all those devices.
Once you find out, providing this passes, once you find out, yes, I can get a, a, a fiber line to Columbus and what's that cost, uh, please let us know.
I will.
Yeah, just let us know what it is.
I mean, to me, that's, it's everyday. I mean, we've got circuits all over the place that we buy and we sell circuits. So that's, but yeah, I'll mention that, I can say that. Yes, ma'am?
Um, just a thought, you were talking about that you had people mention that, hey, I may, I might return to city services. I mean, I mean, speaking out of turn here, but would it be an option to put in the monthly utility bills? Maybe there was a special offer if you decided to return? I don't know.
Oh yeah, no, we can do all kinds of stuff. I have, I, I can remember a time when we did a free installation for internet service when we were launching internet.
Right.
And you can put flyers out there. We could put it, you know, do some ads, letting people know about the new service. Um, so we'll get the word out about it. We can, you know, have it set up at locations for demos. Um, and, and the other thing too, where we're kind of going with this streaming service, so I was talking about this earlier. I don't know if you've heard on the news. So a lot of the places, the cord cutters that have ditched video through their cable company, they still want video, right? And they're not actually cutting the cord. They're still using our internet connection. They're just, they start streaming it eight different services and they're starting to realize they're actually paying more. And then if they're going to something like YouTube TV, if you hadn't heard the news, YouTube TV is doing a ten dollar increase in January, they're going from, I, it was either seventy-three or seventy-nine to eighty-three or eighty-nine dollars a month for their TV service. So they could only take a loss on it for so long and they're, they're starting to see that they're just getting right back up there with cable rates. But at least with this, we can, we can beat that price and we can have local content.
So we won't necessarily see a decrease in our bills necessarily?
It, well, you could. So for example, like Bob's renting two DVRs. Right there is almost twenty dollars a month. If he turns those in, he's going to save twenty dollars a month. And he'll still have DVR service, but in his scenario, or anyone else that has multiple DVRs. So say you record something on your DVR in the bedroom, you can't watch it in the living room. With this, you can record it on your DVR and you, you could be sitting anywhere and you, you know, and pull it up and watch it. Yes.
I know Kim kind of brought this up a while ago, years ago, and I think you were here when we first started cable, were you?
I'm not that old.
Well, okay, sorry.
That was in nineteen eighty-four.
We used to broadcast basketball games. I think we had cameras and so forth. Do we have any of those cameras? Because somebody suggested, wouldn't it be great for the city to broadcast the Christmas parade?
Yeah, so we have.
Which, before we had done something like that, I think.
Yeah. Well, and things have changed a lot. Back then, you carried a box of equipment and you sent it through reverse frequencies to the head end to distribute it. Now you would do it through IP anyways. Um, but yes, we, we have two cameras, HD qualities, the same two that we use when we do, uh, the Kiwanis auction. Or if we do the Know Your Candidates forum.
Mm-hmm.
And that puts that into a box, shoots it actually now across the internet to the head end. And then it's distributed out on sixteen and, and HD. And we also usually put those on YouTube.
Like I said, it would be nice to
But it would still be available.
To do the Christmas parade, which would be fairly easy to do.
Yes.
On this, this back page here of notes and special terms, uh, I'm sure there's people out here on their television that they may have different streaming devices that goes in their television.
Mm-hmm.
Once your, the system goes into, into effect, providing we do it, are they still have that capability or do they have to contact someone to stream that through the TV for an additional cost or is that? What I'm trying to say is that didn't make any sense. Cause I don't, I barely know how to turn a TV on anymore because there's too many buttons.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why.
Don't ask me to did one of them other streaming things, cause I don't know.
That, and that's, that's why we will offer like that set top box feature that I mentioned to Bob. But those, those boxes are much, much less expensive. So the, you know, the monthly fee for that would be cheaper.
Okay.
Um, but you can still have that old feel where you just turn on the TV and channel up and down or you can, but now you'll have the option instead of channel up and down or typing in a channel, you could just say, watch channel twelve and it'll go to twelve.
That's simpler.
It, yeah, it is. But if you want to do the whole streaming devices, smart TVs, it's, it's not as simpler. I mean, it's, it can be simple, but you know, it's the, it's the way of the days.
Well, to streamline this process, um, would a council member like to make any, any motions at this time?
And we do have the funds for this.
Yes.
Okay, alright. You think this is a good thing to do then, right?
I do. Yep.
I trust your judgment on that. I'll make the motion that we authorize the mayor to sign any and all agreements with, with, uh, with Roy to make this, uh, managed IPTV solution bid or?
Contingent on whether or not we get, uh, Columbus, the Columbus line?
Well, yeah, he's got to find that out if we're gonna do this.
I guess if, if it's not in the motion that we, I mean, we're authorized, we're authorized to sign it, but we don't have to if we don't get it.
Providing that you get that line from here to Columbus and let us know that cost and we approve that. Is that what you wanted me to hear?
Well, you normally wouldn't approve the circuit.
There's a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilor Perry, roll call please.
John Coleman?
Yes.
Kim Prepper?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Take it for your time, sir.
Thank you. If you all ever have any other questions, feel free to read out to me.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, um, I would like to entertain a motion to bring off the table from the September third, twenty twenty-four, City Council Meeting Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, wastewater capacity charge and system development charge ordinance amendment. No motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to bring off the table, um, from the September third, twenty twenty-four, City Council Meeting Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, wastewater capacity charge and system development charge ordinance amendment. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Smith, roll call please.
John Coleman?
Yes.
Kim Prepper?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Um, at this time, I am going to have Attorney Wickman read the second reading of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash oh nine by title and title only. And, uh, the Superintendent for the Wastewater is not here this evening. Um, so I will have the Superintendent for the Water Department come step in this place as the next item would be uh, pertaining to the Water Department for the same exact thing. So, uh, Attorney Franklin, would you care to read Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash oh nine by title and title, please?
It's an ordinance of the City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, Amending Ordinance two thousand five hyphen sixteen in sections fifty-one point one one four and fifty-one point one one six of the City of Williamstown Code of Ordinances, further regulating the wastewater capacity charge and the system development charge for property owners related to and with connection with the development in the City of Williamstown and specific areas of Barnes Road and Baton, Baton Ridge Road. And to provide funds needed to pay for expansion, operation, maintenance and replacement and the debt service expenses associated with the Williamstown water treatment working system.
Thank you for your second reading of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash oh nine. Uh, Superintendent Beach, would you care to summarize the change here for the, albeit wastewater department, but after this, we're gonna have a, uh, conversation about the Water Department with the same thing.
I think it's just where he's taking out the capacity, but he's not taking out, he's putting the capacity fees on everything. It was just certain areas. It's going to be the whole area now.
This says we're taking out the, um, the sixty month thing about the qualified even.
Yeah, the sixty months for, he was allowed to pay it for sixty months. Now it's got to be paid up front.
And that's the only change that's happening?
Yes.
Yeah.
The system development fee is still standing there for the twenty year deal. Cause that was where, like Kim, we put in the new water line, Kim?
I'm sorry?
The system developments where we put in like a new water or new sewer, it stays on there for like twenty years.
Yeah, it was, if it was based on a twenty year note.
Yes.
That's how it was based.
And that was still staying in effect.
Yes. That was the purpose of it to
Yes.
to, uh, recover some of that cost.
Not, not be at all wants on the country. It would be some reaching off for the muscle.
Would you care to step up here real fast?
I'm trying to read on my phone.
I'm sorry.
This is on that leak.
So does that have to do with the twenty years? I mean, I get that up here, but if that should, is that what you meant by this is still staying in effect? Cause this is for the wastewater.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this is just, uh, the capacity fee is gonna be a one time deal. It's not staying in effect.
So the math up here and then it's the same thing then?
Yeah.
I got you, okay. I misunderstood. Based off of correct.
It was written out that the capacity fee could be paid over five years.
Yeah.
So we took that out.
So now it's gonna be a payment of when you go to pay for the sewer, um,
Same as the water.
Same as the water, but you'll have to pay it upfront in full.
Because the capacity fee is, is generally a larger fund for like a business.
Yeah.
Actually, it's not a capacity fee. It's your sewer development fee. That's what it should be properly called.
Well, it's called capacity of a matter.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilor Payne, you have the floor.
So it's, uh, we're not gonna act as a bank. I think that's great.
Right, that's all it's about.
Yeah, just curious, so like, I was gonna ask Mayor Brockman, is this something that all other cities, cities don't typically act as a bank to fund development, um, for water or sewer, right? I mean, I'm just saying, is that something that you guys would do? No. So, so there's, so we're just kind of coming up to, you know, the two thousands here by getting our, our paperwork corrected and it shouldn't be too much in the way of, I mean.
No, we're just taking out the city. We've, we've been doing it, but it was on our that we could pay it over five years. And, and now we're just taking that out. It has to be paid up front.
Okay, so.
And it, and it really, what is our capacity fees on a regular water meter per se right now?
Um, eighteen ninety.
How much?
Eighteen ninety.
And so if you've got, got that?
Yeah.
But like for a business, sometimes that capacity fee may be eighty, ninety thousand, according to how much they're gonna use. And me and Mark have to meet with them, the developer, to figure that before it's paid.
Okay.
But instead of the city banking it for five years, we're just taking it out. If you're gonna do it, you pay it up front and be done with it.
Sounds good.
I'm gonna need a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash oh nine. I like that motion. We had a motion on the floor by Councilor Coleman. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Payne, roll call please.
John Coleman?
Yes.
Kim Prepper?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Beach, would you care to step up here? As I ask the council to make a motion to bring off the table the September third, twenty twenty-four, Council, City Council Meeting Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash ten, the Water Rate Ordinance Amendment, which is the capacity fee fees and the system development fees.
So, is that, oh, wastewater and water, but since
Basically the same.
Mr. Miller was not able to make it tonight. Mr. Beach stepped in this place.
Make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to, uh, bring off the table, uh, the Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash ten. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilor Coleman, roll call please.
John Coleman?
Yes.
Kim Prepper?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Moving forward, um, this is the same thing as it was before. Just the way we break down the oh, hang on, sorry. Um, Attorney Wickman, would you care to read enough, Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four dash ten by title and title only and allow Superintendent Beach to summarize, please?
It's an ordinance of the City of Williamstown, Kentucky, Amending Ordinance twenty twenty-three hyphen oh five in section fifty-two point twenty-two and fifty-two point twenty-four of the City of Williamstown Code of Ordinances and further regulating the manner of the sale and price of water sold and to be sold by the City of Williamstown, Kentucky.
Okay, so.
I've got the wrong ordinance on my phone.
Yeah, um.
So the twenty-four, the twenty twenty-four Order Ten, that's the new.
Yeah, so
Okay, so what we're doing here?
Whatever reason, there's two, um.
Yeah, this is not over the, this is not over the capacity fees here.
No.
Yeah, I got it here. So this is the water meter prices. So before, you all had a price in the city limits and out city limits. I see no reason to have two different prices. For one, in city limits is usually costs more for the city because we got tear up the sidewalks and the streets. streets. So we were at a regular three-quarter meter, we were a thousand on in-city limits and seventeen hundred out. So I decided, I'm asking you all, let's just make them the same. Instead of having two, that's less that the women have to take care of in the office, we just have one price. And then, like the other meters on down here, the two-inch, four, and six were underpriced anyway because they hadn't been changed in a while, which we just, on the four and six, always do supply the meters anyway.
Tim, does this just applies to new development as well? Is this like a new...
So we've had the three-quarter at seventeen hundred for maybe two years, I think. When did we, when did we change that last? Do you know, Alex? I'm pretty sure it was...
It's not been since I've been.
I think it was right before Vivian left, I believe.
Vivian left in May?
I believe she did.
What was your question again, Tim?
When did we make the seventeen hundred? I believe we did it when she was still here. But we've been doing the seventeen hundred, I know, for a while, so I want to make the in-city limit the same as the out-city limit.
You're talking about for the price to replace or install a meter?
Yeah, for a new meter installed. Because the way we had it, we had like, just on a three-quarter diff, three-quarter meter, we had like a thousand, seven hundred dollars difference. We had a thousand for one and seventeen hundred out. Which we don't do a lot of in-city limits, but still, yeah.
The thing you're changing in your ordinance is your cost of your meters.
Right.
If you read this thing here, the way it's dated, you know, your metering charges go back to 1993. I know they've been updated 2000, 2006, you all changed your metering pricing considerably. That was in 2006. That's probably the last time it's been changed.
Right. I know that the three fours and sixes was way off.
They were a lot off.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what got the attention.
Yes.
When a couple of customers requested three-inch meters. That's what, that was in '06.
So now we're, you know, and I've priced them, of course, I used a census meter, which is probably a little bit on the higher side, but that's what we've got in the system.
But you're still going to always have any outside the city limits pricing for water. That's still in effect?
Yes, yes.
That doesn't change.
Yes, I'm just changing the meter price. I just think there should just be one meter price for a new install, because the ones in the city, we end up losing money on anyway, usually, because we've got to dig up the street and everything else.
Any additional questions?
So for the, for section B, where it says three-inch and it's red, and there's old price is two thousand, what's the new price for...
The three-inch, we didn't do because we don't have a lot of them in the system. We just went on, done the four. It's wrote in here, if you read on down here, the three and four and six is actually, we just supply the meter anyway at that cost, to whatever the cost was.
So if you read it, three's being taken out in, in some areas?
But the threes, from three up, we don't install. We just supply a meter at the price. You know, the three-quarter, the one-inch, the two-inch, we do install. And that, you know, you're getting the meter, the setter, you know, we're hooking to the vein, putting the saddle on the corkstop, everything else. And I've got it to where we should make a little bit of money on each install. I figured it for, you know, a couple hours worth of backhoe time, a couple hours for three guys to go out and fix them and put them in. Which they are probably going to be higher than Dry Ridge or Block Pin, and they've probably not updated theirs in a long time. Theirs probably need to be updated, too.
Any additional questions?
I mean, generally, I mean, this three-quarter, we've roughly got about a thousand dollars in parts. That's where we're at. And I've got it in seventeen hundred, so I mean, I've got seven hundred for the city to go out and do the install. I guess that would be up to you all who want me to charge for going out and doing it, or you just want to charge parts.
I feel like that we should at least cover up costs.
One thing that you don't have, sorry, would you?
I'm done.
I don't know if you have anything, you know, I know that here just recently, the fire department's got an ordinance where they do charges, the electric department and cable has. I don't know if it's set in this ordinance here, so if it needs to be put in this ordinance or another ordinance, that if you have to go out because someone's tore a hydrant out, do you need to put together something in this ordinance or another ordinance? So if somebody takes a hydrant out and you're going to charge an insurance company, then you need to have some set fees for the, for the hydrant?
Right.
Or damages thereof. Does that make sense, Mr. Wickman?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Crepper, it does, and that's something that we were kind of working on, but this needed to be updated first. So there's a, it's not complete, the ordinance is not complete, we're not prepared to bring it to council yet, but that is, so say suppose somebody runs over a, I can't think of the thing. What is it? No, not a fire hydrant, the little lid thing and the...
Yeah, the little transmitter.
The meter, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, couldn't think of that.
Well, the transmitters are like two hundred. I just got a box in there.
Yeah.
Our price.
If people run over them, and then we got to go out and just replace them.
So would you like, seriously?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with what you have here. Maybe after the first of the year, if you need to clean that up, put you some price together and bring it back and put it in a full ordinance where you don't have two or three ordinances out here that...
You want to do it all at once? I'm good with that. We can wait till the next, your council meeting after the first year, I'll get it all together.
I don't have a problem with that at all. If you want to clean it up and make an ordinance that together?
I think we should need to do something, because like I said, they run over the water meters, they mow off their transmitters.
Yeah.
And that way, we can put a set price for, for charging.
Well, yeah, because...
Because the city loses money on them.
Well, not only that, but you know, I just thought, you know, the state mows right-ofways. If they take out a lid...
Yeah.
With all due respect, I'm going to chime in with an opinion. I am not against doing that, as that's something that we have kind of been working on already, but we collectively felt like this ordinance needed to be passed, and it, we're still not complete with the ordinance, so I don't think we'll have it completed by January. So I'd rather go ahead and take care of this. I'll be, this is still a first reading, but I would hate to table this again and go from September until whenever this gets done.
It wouldn't be that big of a deal.
I mean, or just...
I mean, as long as we can get Laura to write it back up. I mean, that's...
Yeah, it's just a matter of another meeting, and you know, you're going, if you add something to it, would, Mr. Wickman can, if you're changing the language and you're going to add some additional, does that mean you need to start with the first reading again since he's adding more to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In other words, table this and get a new ordinance together.
Would you like me to bring you on paper our exact cost of everything?
Well, you'll need to estimate your cost.
Yeah, but I mean, do you want, do you want to see it? Like, I can bring you like, what our three-quarter meter is costing us?
You're talking about a hydrant?
Well, just like everything, these meters and everything.
No, I don't have a problem with your cost of metering. That's, that's not the issue. It's a matter of protecting you if someone runs over a lid, as he brought up, or takes out a hydrant.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that way, you, you're going to have to figure your operating cost, along with the materials, put into your ordinance that there's going to be an annual price increase that reflects those things. So you've got the tools to charge as what will be, and what everybody's doing.
It's not a price increase, it's a, it's a charge if somebody damages.
No, it's not, that's not the point of a price increase, but if you have it in your ordinance, a replacement cost, and if you need to put in your language, if there's an annual price increase, you're protected so you don't come back...
No, I understand what you're saying. That would be good.
Yeah, because...
Because I think we need that for the hydrants.
Yeah, because that happened to them in '06, when they was charging, I think, twelve hundred dollars for a three-inch meter, and they bought one, it was two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So that was a wake-up call. But if you get pricing in, you've got, you've got the tools.
Well, we've got all these electronic meters now. We've got the little transmitters and everything, and everybody mows them off the lawnmower.
That's not good.
And then we eat it. So you can put it in here, what it's going to cost to get it replaced. After they pay for a couple of them, they'll probably stay off of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Do it for the first of the year, then?
Whatever the rest of the council wants to do. I think it's a great idea, myself.
That would be good, because I've got some other water stuff I need to put on the council, on the zebra muscles and stuff, so that would be good for me.
All right.
A motion needs to be made to do anything.
Make a motion to table 24-10, is that what we need?
Yep. Motion on the floor, seconded at table ordinance number 2024-10. Roll call, please.
Who's seconded it?
Coleman. Counselor Coleman.
John Coleman.
Yes.
Kim Crepper.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
All right, table. Moving on, budget amendment discussion. Superintendent Joe McCollum's request.
Okay, the issue that I've got is my other contractual service line item is depleted. I need some more money. But what it is, is like, if there's a automobile accident and I bring in the contractor to help us change the poles out, and then I bill back the insurance company, well, I get reimbursed for that, but that goes into my depreciation fund. Well, that's happened five times this year so far. Two of them were directional mooring expenses from a development on Hume Bridge, and then a accidental hit on a service over in Thirbred. But everything was billed back to either the contractor or the insurance company. So basically, I recouped that money, but it went into my depreciation fund. So what I need is permission to move it out of my depreciation fund, back into my line item to cover the rest of the year. Because two weeks ago, we had two poles hit in the same week, and I paid two invoices, and I'm sitting on one because there's not enough money in the line item to do the PO on it. So basically, I just kind of put my line item into my depreciation fund, so now I just need to filter some back over. And Alex can probably add more to that if you need.
He's, he's right, and he has it in his depreciation fund. He bills...
But I don't, it, it's, my understanding that it has to go into my depreciation fund as opposed to getting the check, depositing the check and putting it back into my line item without going through this process. So...
We still have to create a budget amendment and go through first and second reading.
That's, that's fine. I mean, I'm just sitting on a seven thousand dollar invoice while we're doing this. That's just, as long as we know that.
Is there a certain amount that you're looking to transfer, or?
I would, I would probably do twenty thousand. Move it over, and that, that should hopefully, unless people keep running over utility poles, that should cover us through the year.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So do we need to all vote in favor of that, or?
In the discussion, I figured I would create a budget amendment, and you would vote then.
Good enough. So we're all in agreement to move the twenty thousand?
All right, moving on, EMS services, garbage rate discussion and how to proceed. As you know, the county has enacted a countywide ambulance taxing district. There's a lot of issues there with figuring out how it's going to be funded. I had met with, sorry, I got my foot stuck on something, JD Channing from KLC. I talked to him. We had a meeting last week with Judge Dills, Ken Little, Dry Ridge, Mayor Brockman, and Attorney Gatlin. Attorney Wickman was present, and Pete Whaley was present to represent the ambulance board. A lot of discussion was had there. There's still a lot of questions that are unanswered. I know that there's a meeting on January 9th for the board, and we all kind of plan to be there and kind of see what the board's direction is, if they want to go on how to proceed. However, I feel like the City of Dry Ridge approached us in good faith and asked us to re-enter into the interlocal agreement. However, through discussion, it typically had been three years. We decided to go with just one year because we all felt the county was going to enact this taxing district. We don't think it's going to be completely functional and up and running by the time the interlocal agreement expires, and that's at the end of June 2025. I think it would be wise to enter into an interlocal agreement with Dry Ridge again to provide the ambulance services, possibly do that, do that for like up to two years until the county is comfortable moving forward on its own. But, I mean, Dry Ridge does a phenomenal job with its EMS ambulance services. I attended an E911 board meeting today, and after that, we were presented with some numbers and data and figures on how they are doing over the first three quarters of the year. We don't have the fourth quarter in yet, but, or we're still in the fourth quarter. But I know that there's been a lot of back and forth. I don't think it's wise to remove our garbage rate at this time, because that is what is funding the deal with Dry Ridge. I know Mayor Brockman is here. If he would like to chime in and say anything, more than welcome to. I know council may or may not have questions.
Anything about that question? Josh might be, he's on the board, so he may be able to answer if he's able to or not, I don't know what, knowing that he knows for sure what's...
I have a question.
We have a meeting on the 9th. We are supposed to have a workshop, maybe by the end of this week, or we're going to iron out exactly what we're going to do. The board split on what should be done as far as a long-term agreement with Dry Ridge or starting the ambulance service as soon as possible. So Dry Ridge is going to be present to present a fair long-term deal, and we're going to entertain that as far as the board goes. But we haven't really made any decisions quite yet as a board, a month ago, on how it's going, or how it's going to look, how it's going to be structured, if it's going to be a countywide EMS service now, or if it's going to continue on to two or three years before we get everything that the county needs to get up and running. So the whole of it is, we just don't want to rush the countywide service and then go backwards as far as the level of care. So we're trying to do the best we can without making the citizens suffer. I can answer any questions. I probably won't have much.
Counselor Payne.
I'm just curious, should we all expect the district to, to charge on our taxes next year for the EMS? So we're going to still, so that, that's the big thing we have to communicate to the community is, if EMS district is going to bill us on our taxes and we're going to still be paying Dry Ridge, we can all expect to pay double? That's, that's what we were talking about a month ago, or...
Everything that we dealt with before is still going to happen, it's just pushing it off till, till next year. So the hiccup that we had doesn't keep this from, from happening, just pushes it off again till next year. So yes, it's still going to happen.
Well, it sounds like you're not going to be ready next year either, if we're going for two years, so you're going to tax... for two years, so you're going to tax me twice in the county, and then I'm still paying two years to Dry Ridge? Is that what, that's what I'm hearing?
We don't have an answer yet.
Counselor Smith?
So, we should have just let the county keep, I should have let the county keep my hundred and twenty-seven dollars that I got back, and maybe that would have helped.
Well, technically. Technically, they're not allowed to bill in the year that it's created, so.
Oh, okay.
Per Kansas statute, Counselor Crupper?
Can you just make a donation?
Josh, in, in thinking of this thing out, if, and I don't know what the balance, if, say for example, your board that you're a member of puts this countywide EMS, uh, agreement together, now Cretton currently has their own district, so they wasn't even a part of this in the beginning, is that right?
Right.
Okay. Let's just say if Williamstown said, we're happy charging sixteen dollars a month per, per garbage fee, and Williamstown says, county, you go ahead and do what you want, we're going to opt out and continue to give Dry Ridge that service, what does that do in complicating or simplifying, what does that do with, with what you all are trying or thinking about doing?
You asking me as a board member, or you asking me as a, as a fire chief?
Well, I would be asking you as a board member, fire chief, and a citizen then, so you can throw three of them out there if you want.
Okay. As a board, that would, uh, if you opted out, that would really hinder, hinder what the county's going to be able to do. As a fire chief, whatever the best level of care would be the best answer, and as we currently sit, Dry Ridge, in my opinion, is the best, uh, quality of care. So, opting out is not as simple as just opting out because the district is already formed, so at that point, you'd have to have a special election, or you'd have to wait for two years for a general election for that to happen. Those conversations have, have been made, and for that to be done is not an easy task, but it is something that can be done. Just a matter of if you want to pay for a special election to make that happen now, if you want to wait for two years to put it all on the ballot to let the citizens decide which route they would want to go.
Either way, we're looking at a two-year process.
Yeah, and then at that point, we would have to decide as a city if we want to contract with Dry Ridge for as long as they're willing to still do it, or whatever the case is.
Well, the thing that was kind of a wake-up call here is that, you know, in, in, once the tax bills came out, and you've seen how much you paid for the EMS agreement money, then when you did the math on that versus sixteen dollars a month, sixteen dollars a month was considerably cheaper than the way the assessment was done. Now, also too, that, and I had two or three people that own homes that rent them out. That, they got their tax bill, and here is the EMS agreement tax, or ambulance service fee, whatever you want to call it, they were more troubled to the fact that the tenant had it on their sixteen dollar a month bill, and the tenant was paying it on their utility bill. And so, the tenant would need the service if they was ever need the service, where the owner of the home said, I'm going to have to raise the rent to offset the cost, which complicates things. So, the tenant has sixteen dollars a month in their pocket every month versus the big impact fee that, that it is. So my point is, if you all can figure this thing out, and I've, since you're one of the board members, I won't throw you in that, but I thought your number was a bit high. Because of, of that amount of money that is charged.
Because of where they, they, they maxed the tax rate out.
Correct, and I understood that.
It was high.
But, maxing it out right out of the gate was, was, was a bit of a, a hit.
I understand.
However, I don't think that was the board's decision to do, I think that was thrown in, in the mix of when the board was creating.
Well, we all know that, we know where that came from.
That was a county thing, and then we got, put in the place to say, okay, here it is.
Yeah. Well, now you're a board member, I would think you should have some at least input on that. If they decide that they're going to bring this back to the table, and maybe rethink the cost, then maybe it needs to be lowered.
As a treasurer, it's my personal opinion, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, just getting, we haven't talked about this yet, but quite a few of the board members are thinking the same thing, but even at the max amount of money that we are getting now, it's not, not going to be enough to cover EMS service. So, lowering it would not be an option.
But you understand my point?
I do, I do. And I understand that this is, it is, it's, it is a mess. It's a mess on you, it's a mess on us, it's a mess on Dry Ridge, and, um, we're, we're tasked to figure it out, and it's that time where rubber meets the road, and the board's going to have to make some decision on which direction, because currently, we've just been kicking the tires until this point, so. That's what the meeting on the ninth is, uh, that's what the workshop is that's coming up. Again, that could be the end of this week, beginning of next week, but we're trying to get it done before Christmas, so we have some sort of idea of what we're doing as a board come the ninth, because we want to be ready when Dry Ridge comes to present their option.
So with that said, I know when we talked about this back in the summer here at council, it was instructed for Dry Ridge to come to us in January to start negotiating a contract, if we're going to have a contract July one. Because we're currently still, as you know, charged sixteen dollars a month per, per utility bill, or per water bill, or garbage bill.
Garbage.
On the garbage rate, right? So, understanding is, unless it's changed, that we're continuing to charge until the end of June anyway, until Dry Ridge comes here in January and makes their presentation, and we got a couple of months to figure out, so we're, so.
That's what those conversations are now, is what, that, that was the meaning that, that he was talking about, that's, those, those, those conversations have already started.
Yes, just to keep the council informed of what's currently going on.
So, Dry Ridge is currently working on putting together an extension, because there is no plan in place after July first.
Correct.
And the EMS board, I don't know if we're going to have anything ready up and running by, by that time, and if we do, to me, that's reckless, so.
Counselor Coleman?
Josh, this is kind of off the topic a little bit, but on it, question for you, your personal opinion, staying with Dry Ridge, going with the county, which is the fastest way for me to get an ambulance parked in the city limits of Williamstown for the citizens? Well, when we talked about it last time, Dry Ridge talked about putting one here, here we are in January, there's not one parked in Williamstown still.
We read, we, we reopened that conversation today.
Okay, because I, I mean, yeah, I'm, I want an ambulance in Williamstown. I don't care how we got to go about doing it, but I want one parked in Williamstown, because I think it's the smartest way to go about it, so.
That was a discussion that Dry Ridge and I had.
That was a discussion we had today.
And then that was a discussion that Dry Ridge and Mayor had, and that was a discussion that Dry Ridge and everybody had, so that's, that's what their intentions are, and, so.
So you're saying go with Dry Ridge, and Greg, you're saying we'll work out that deal?
If you've got a place to put it, we'll put it there.
Fine. We've got to figure something out.
The, the whole deal is, on this, on this tax coming up, he can, I mean, he can tell you, what they, what they've got coming in will not run an EMS service with the quality that you have now. I don't care who says it, they will, he can just attest that, that I'm right. It will not.
And that's where I differ from some of the counterparts on the board, because from someone that's.
Will they have an EMS service? Yeah, they'll have one, but is it going to be the quality? Hell, no.
From someone that has ate, slept, and bred this job my whole entire life?
That's why I asked the question early on about is, is, is the city contracting with Dry Ridge?
That would be the better bet.
Counselor Smith?
You're saying that as a board member of that, so that's, that's good enough for me.
I realize what the, what that means.
All right.
Counselor Smith?
Um, well, I was thinking, like, when we talked about putting an ambulance here, it was like, where were the people going to sleep and stay, wasn't that part of it? Why don't we get, get one here?
We have enough beds to house two additional, even with the two that, that we have staffed. Are we ready right this minute? No, as far as, uh, space in the bay and things like, like that, no, we would have to make some adjustments and some movements, um, but with things coming down the bike like they are with the new fire truck, we won't have that around.
All right. Thank you very much, moving on to item number sixteen, as, uh, for whatever reason, item number fifteen should have been up there with item number twelve.
One thing I got to ask you before you started, so, is it, is it my understanding we're still leaving our sixteen dollars a month on there till at least June?
Yes, so.
Okay, that's all I need.
All right, moving on, second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, line item budget amendment for the fire department. Attorney Wickman, would you care to read ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen by title, title only, and allow the clerk to summarize, please?
An ordinance of the city of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, amending his line item budget for the city of Williamstown pursuant to KRS ninety-one eight one oh three oh ten, for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty-four, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and providing that the money shall be expended by or on behalf of the city of Williamstown, except in accordance therewith.
Thank you. Ms. Cummins, would you care to summarize?
So, we'll be going to page seven, under, uh, fire department expenditures. Um, the things that are changing is, uh, the retirement, we're upping that, and that's where we agreed that we would cover the hazardous retirement, um, for the part timers that are already in the system. Um, maintenance and repairs, um, is being upped just to get us through the year, uh, as well as, um, equipment parts, uniform and clothing, and vehicle expense, um, just to up all of those to get us, uh, through the remainder of the fiscal year. We did take seventeen thousand from the county fire funds, um, to go to the vehicle expenses, uh, just because of the ladder truck that is currently, um, has the crack in it and a couple other fixes, we've decided to take the funds from the county fire funds and put that into the vehicle expense, and we do not, um, have a budget amendment in the revenues, because we already had the, uh, revenue approved in a previous, uh, budget amendment, under the Heritage Bank transfer from where we closed that account and put it into our account. So that is where the money is coming from, we're just finally taking that money that we've received and allocated into the line items, um, that we see needed.
And that's the ninety-three.
No, the, uh, what came from Heritage was seventy-one four forty. And we're actually only using, um, thirty thousand of it, because we're moving the other seventeen from the county fire funds to cover that.
So you need to take seventy, thirty thousand off seventy-one four forty, is that what you're saying?
Essentially, yeah.
All right, seeing that this is a second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, I'm going to need somebody to make a motion to approve.
Before you say that, Alex, so, so you're seventy-one four forty, you're taking thirty thousand out and transferring, so that's going to give you a balance of forty-one four forty? Is that what you're saying?
That would be left, yeah.
That's okay. And that was on your Heritage Bank transfer, is what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, I got that off page one.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
I'll make the motion, if that's what we're waiting for.
Yep, motion made by Counselor Payne to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Coleman, roll call, please.
John Coleman?
Yes.
Kim Crupper?
Uh, yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries, moving forward. Williamstown Marina Project Insurance Claim Update per Kim Crupper's request. I know a few weeks back, probably about four weeks ago maybe, um, Ms. Brookreiter reached out to me and, um, discussed possibly setting up a meeting, but it wouldn't be until after December seventh, uh, I got sick and I was not in the week of past December seventh, however, I spoke with Ms. Alex Cummins, you had spoken with the insurance claim adjuster, would you care to give us an update?
Um, so I have spoken to both the insurance claim adjuster and to Brooke. When I asked for an update from the insurance adjuster, she said that she was waiting to hear back from Brooke, um, gave me her number, I gave, I passed the information along to Brooke to reach out to the insurance adjuster. Brooke has, uh, reached out to her, but has not heard back, so it's kind of, we're still just kind of playing phone tag.
Why didn't you hear from us? This is your insurance.
Uh, she said she wanted to get with you all, um, I sent her all of your quotes, and, um, things like that, she said she wanted to get with Brooke to get the layout and make sure, um, she understood where everything went. To make sure, because she has our plan coverage, so she wanted to make sure that everything that we submitted, what, because we even submitted the fuel lines, which technically is not covered under our insurance, but we sent it all, so she was trying to get with you all to see what would be covered, what would not, under what our coverage shows.
Who do we have insurance company with to cover this?
So, we have, um, we go through KLC for our property. And, um, like workman's comp, it's all under KLC insurance, um, so we pay them, and then the insurance adjuster that they sent out is from Collins and Company.
Seems like it's taken an awful long time for something to happen so long ago.
And that's, that's why.
Where, where the problem lies, I don't know.
And I mean, she, I spoke with her last week, um, because I had previously given her Brooke's number, and I've talked with Brooke a lot, um, so when she, I emailed again and asked for another update, she said that she had tried to get ahold of Brooke, gave me her, another number to contact, I immediately, um, text Brooke and said, call this number, I've talked with Brooke again, she said she's called, left a message, and she still hasn't gotten back to her.
She has all of my contacts, all of my phone numbers. So, they're, she's not calling me. But at any rate, I guess, I mean, I can call every hour, any hour tomorrow, I have no problem sitting down until somebody answers me, but what is the next thing that needs to happen, or in the meantime, what needs to happen? Because I keep hearing multiple different stories, and I'd like to get it out of the way tonight, so I don't have to camp out on the lawn over here, to get this started, we're six months in, we've got five months to get it done before we open for business again next season. If, does there need to be an ad in the paper? What are we waiting on besides insurance? I'd like an answer today.
We have no money allocated for it, we're sorry, we do, however, it's coming from the insurance, so.
I have a couple of questions when you get done.
Go ahead.
Do you have a direct agent that you all talk to?
Yeah, and that's, uh, her name is Gina, and I have, that's who I've been emailing. And I have, that's who I've been emailing, and that's who I've been talking to. Any information that she gets, I have sent her Brooke's information.
This is your agent?
Yeah, this is the claim agent. At first, I sent her Brooke's information. I said, because she said, is there someone at the marina that I can contact? I said, absolutely, here is Brooke Ryder's information. Sent her that. And then when we didn't hear back, I sent her another email, said, is there any update? She called me, said, I haven't been able to get ahold of Brooke. Here's my number, give it to Brooke. I immediately text Brooke and said, here is the number she'd like you to call. And Brooke called that number, left her a message, and still has not heard back from her.
Do you need to take a report and file it with the Insurance Commission on the delay of this? Talk to your, you talk to your agent that you talk to. Say if you need to file a complaint with the Insurance Commission in Frankfurt to speed this up, do it. Because six months into this, there's no, there's no excuse for this. I don't care who the insurance agent or company is. This is, that's, I know you're doing your job, but these folks here shouldn't have to be doing all this.
And if I could get an answer, I'm.
I know you would. It's not, it's not on you. It's a matter of you gonna have to just tell them you're going to contact the Insurance Commission and file a complaint. That's what it takes. I'm done.
Counselor Smith.
Are you talking to the adjuster, the claims adjuster, or the insurance agent?
The claims adjuster, that who's in charge of the actual claim.
But he was talking about the agent, and I just was clarifying that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say if you tell him you're gonna contact the state insurance commission, that'll probably get their attention.
Okay.
Because it's due KLC, right?
And they, so KLC is the one who we reported it to. They sent it to Collins &amp; Company. Collins &amp; Company then contacted us, gave us the claim number, and that's when all of this started.
What's Collins &amp; Company, what's their role?
They're the insurance adjusters. So, they are the ones who come out, look at it, assess it, make sure it's in our policy. And that's, so when I sent all that information, that's when she asked for Ms. Ryder's information because she wasn't quite sure about the complexity of it. So, she wanted to get a little more clarification, and I told her that Brooke would be the best person for that clarification.
Any additional questions?
Mark, just start calling every day. That gives you something to do.
All right, moving on. Discussion of ordinance number 2024-19, Williamstown Fire Department Schedule of Charges, Mitigation Rates Amendment. Oh, sorry, Mr. Perry. Chief Willey, would you care to kind of open up the line of dialogue of what needs to be done here?
So, after the second reading, we started the process of getting the accounts set up. But there was verbiage issues in the ordinance, and so the insurance, or the billing agency has requested that the ordinance be changed to what the original wording was for, in order for us to proceed. They said that all of the concerns of the council would be dealt with during the initial setup, like what we talked about. But in the ordinance itself, should be a blanket ordinance, and then we can dial it down as the account is set up. If, if that does not get done, then we would have to abandon this. And the company is rather frustrated and said, maybe this isn't the best fit.
Counselor Payne.
Two questions. I know that we requested Frank to add some wording in there to meet everybody's criteria up here on council. Just wondering if you were able to do that. And number two, if we fix, or put it as, as it was, can they write up in the contract saying, hey, look, these are this? Like, I'd like to see the contract that says, hey, these are the specifications that the council's requiring. I mean, say the ordinance says one thing, but if our contract is.
I have that now.
So, the contract has that wording that we all wanted?
Yeah, because that was what we agreed on, that's, and that's how I set it up. Frank did get that changed. However, when I sent it back to the billing for their approval, so we wouldn't have to go back through this again, they said no. The ordinance would need to stay exactly what it was supposed to stay, and no variance off of that, in order for them to proceed.
Because our main thing was, we didn't want to bill individually, unless it was a, like a criminal act or something like that. That's what we were.
We're not going to, that, that has not changed. So, nothing as far as what I've been saying has, has changed. The only thing that, that changes is that, that, that line that was taken out needs to be put back in for the billing agency. And then I have an email from them now that says with that, and then goes on and, and explains what the setup is, which is that no city resident would, would obtain a bill, if all go to insurance. The reason is because the trucking industry is the biggest revenue for this. It's not the individual residents. This is not mainly for the residents. This is mainly for industry and for the trucking. And so, because most trucking agencies are self-employed, that, that line does not allow them to bill them.
Well, we will be able to, to bill somebody that's in an active negligence or criminal act, right? Because we don't want to incentivize someone not to have insurance.
Right.
So, so you can still bill.
Yes. So, unfortunately, I have to take it back and ask for a first reading again to get the ordinance back to the original wording, which was, which has already been approved by the billing agency. So, once that's approved, then we can continue on with where we were supposed to go.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, did we, or did, all right, and I'm not hearing too good. My good hearing aids are broke. Last time we took out where the individual would not be billed. Now, are you saying that's being put back in?
Yes.
Would not a way, a simple way to have done that? A taxpayer of Williamstown who is already paying taxes for the fire department would not have to pay that? Wouldn't that have simplified all that?
No, the billing agency said that you're overcomplicating it at that, at that point, and that's what the new packet account is, is for. That, that's what that's for, is to be able to dial in more of the dynamics of what you want, what you don't want. But the ordinance is supposed to be a blanket for them to be able to do what they need to do.
I know four years ago, we talked about something like this. Residents in Williamstown who are paying taxes for the fire department and police and so forth. It was supposedly put in an ordinance, and it was gonna be. Where since, if somebody coming from Corinth and has a wreck here, they're not paying tax money here. So, I understand that. But I've had people still question me. I'm paying city taxes, why should, should I be billed for maybe what the insurance doesn't pay or whatever? And I know you say you won't do it, but it was still in there, correct?
It's still in there that, it does not specify. But yes, it does say that residents, or that individuals can still be billed. It, it does not say residents. It says the individual, which opens it up for the trucking. The email that I currently have from them just spells out that we can only bill non-residents and the trucking agencies directly, and, and not your residents, only resident insurances. That's how the account is set up. And that's an email from Mike, so that they understand that. He said that I can try to give him a call, but he may be in and out, may not be able to, to, to talk to us. But I've gone back and forth with them a lot over the last week, and they said this is just the way that it has to be in order for them to do what they need to do. That it's a simple concept that is not out to get anybody, and this is what they require.
Well, Chief, thank you for your time. We're gonna proceed forward, if that's okay? Being this is a first reading of an ordinance, no actions can be taken. So, allow first reading of the ordinance, and then we can kind of continue that conversation and make a decision at, by the second reading at the next council meeting. Attorney Wickman, would you care to read ordinance number 2024-19 by title, title only, and summarize, please?
It's an ordinance of the city of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, amending ordinance 2024-17 regarding fire department mitigation fees. By summary, the ordinance changes the the determination of the Consumer Price Index from that established by Kentucky to that established by the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics of the Department of Labor. The other change is to reinsert what was taken out of the original in regard to the responsible parties being billed directly.
Thank you. Again, that was the first reading of the ordinance, so no actions are taken. Chief has an additional comment he would like to make this time.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of better explain. So, so the ordinance is just the permission to actually bill. The actual, the actual contract account that, that we set up dials into what we bill and, and how we do it. So, there's two separate documents, essentially. What they have to have is the ordinance giving them approval. And then, once they have that, then we can dive into what, who, where, and how. So, that's why the, the change. And that's why they won't accept anything other than what they have to have.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Moving forward, before I request a motion, keep in mind, there are two different subject matters that we will be going into executive session regarding. Would anyone care to attend a motion?
Make your motion, we're going into executive session there.
Pursuant to, hang on one second.
Oh, sorry.
You have to read the KRS and.
KRS 61.810, print C1, print C, potential pending litigation, and MGP I lawsuit update.
There's a motion on the floor by Counselor Crepper, seconded by Counselor Perry. Roll call, please.
Sorry, sorry, hold on, I was ready. John Coleman?
No.
Kim Crepper?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are in executive session at this time. Would the body.